First County Planning Board meeting December first. Uh, to order Dennis, please do the roll call.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask any member that's not muted, they're not talking to please mute themselves. I'm getting a lot of feedback. I don't know what everybody else is or not, but I'm getting a lot of feedback. Ms. Pacora? Mr. Gilde?
Present.
Mr. Cohen? Mr. Conyer? Mr. McCarthy?
Here.
Mr. Hanson?
Here.
Ms. Lanzetta? Mr. Brand? Miss Gatto?
Here.
Mr. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Baden? Mike's not here? I thought he was here. I thought I saw. Mr. Brown? Mr. Hovarty? Miss, Miss Welton? Mr. Watkins?
Here.
Mr. Anquist? Show you there Frank. I know you're here.
And if you didn't get Laverty, he's here.
There. I was muted.
Thank you. Mr. Laverty's here as well?
Yes.
So is, so is Vivian.
Okay. I saw Vivian here. Okay. Mr. Markowitz? Mr. Rudikoff?
He's here Dennis, just connecting and Mr. Cohen connected. You called him before he was on.
Okay, thank you. Mike, Glenn, I'm sorry. Mr. Travers?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
He was gonna be late. He was, he's working at the pod.
Okay. Mr. McLaughlin?
Present.
Mr. Gugliari?
Uh, yes, I'm here.
I'm sorry, G. I know I mispronounced that. I apologize.
I thought you did.
Yeah, I apologize for that. So the ones I missed, Mr. Cohen, I'm, I'm told you're here?
Yes, Michael Cohen's present.
Thank you. And I saw Mr. Mr. Cora, you joined late? Ms. Lanzetta?
Chris Brand is attending for his place.
Chris Brand is attending as an attendee. I know he received the link.
Yeah, and some reason Mike Baden is in as a attendee as well.
And I'm on, I'm on as well. Matthew Rudikoff.
I got you, Matt. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you. I'm here as well now.
And that was, who said that?
Mr. Brand.
Chris. Thank you, Chris. Yep. Got you. Got you. Okay.
Amen. Roxanne.
Got you Roxanne. Alright, so we have more than a quorum, as they say.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Yeah, sorry, Rob. I guess I clicked on the wrong link to get in the meeting.
You're our techie guy.
Everyone have a chance to look over the minutes from last month?
I'll make a motion to accept you, McLaughlin.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Anquist, second.
Who is the second, please?
Anquist.
Thank you, Mr. Anquist.
Okay, any recusals? Any?
Hey Dennis, did you get me it? Did you get me on the attendance?
I did. Drew, I saw you. I saw you join late. I, I got you.
Okay.
Okay.
I know I didn't call your name. I apologize.
That's okay.
Any objections to it? It's passed, accepted? Okay, education and training opportunities? Anything going on from anyone?
I think we sent, we sent one training opportunity out. And I just remind the board, if you don't have enough training credits, you could take the tutorials online. From, from DOS as well, from Department of State.
Yeah, Dennis, I would say they're very backed up. I've been trying to get my last hour in. This is Chris Brand from Marlboro. Um, they're going through a transitional phase at the New York Planning Federation, and uh, if you haven't gotten them in, I would say do it as soon as possible.
Thanks, Chris. Appreciate that. Um, and if anybody's really stuck short, um, what I'll offer is a special training session on a topic to be named. Um, and we'll do it as a Zoom meeting of one of the days before the new year. And it'll just be me, me and uh, maybe we'll do transportation work, uh, or housing. Um, I'm not sure yet, but we'll do, we'll do a special training, um, on a topic that, that you're interested in, and we'll invite everybody to count that as a session if you need the last hour.
That'd be wonderful. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Um, any community reports?
Yeah, I have one. The uh, part of the business district in Sorgerties is gonna be closed for Christmas in the village. Uh, so if anybody has plans to come up through there on Sunday from noon to six. And you, I don't have any plans on coming through the village. You might wanna seek alternate routes. The main street from uh, Village Pizza all the way down to Stewart's and partitioned street from Dallas Hot Wieners to Russell Street. And Market Street from Maine to Sawyer Bank will be closed off. I'm sorry. Market, Market to uh, Love, Lovey Street, excuse me.
What's the date on that?
Holiday in the Village.
What's the actual date, Vince?
Pardon me?
The actual date?
So this coming Sunday.
Sunday. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other community reports? All right.
And the DOT did put two uh, those electronic signs upcoming into the village, so.
Okay. Uh, the planning reports, uh, I have none. Uh, Mike, would you like to handle the uh, nominating committee report?
Well, actually, that's me.
Okay, Roxanne.
Roxanne is gonna handle it. Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Uh, the nominating committee has had a difficult time in getting together with COVID. Um, so we're requesting a delay of one month. We're requesting that the current slate of officers remains for another month. And we will come back with a slate in January.
That sounds good.
So we would need a motion for the existing slate to remain in effect for one more month.
Okay, um, I have a question on that. Can we just keep them in a, for one more, since they've only been, they're actually the current sheriff's been here for one year? Like, can we just make a motion to accept them for one more year?
Uh, no, we cannot because there's varying degrees of who can and cannot stay in position that, that has been relayed to us. So we're only requesting one month's delay.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Excuse me? Who made the motion?
Glenn.
I'll second it.
I'll second it, Conyer.
Oh, and Saber?
Here. Yes.
Yes.
Saber. Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Roxanne, I, I didn't quite hear what you said. Uh, there was a lot of new, would you say the reason was? I'm sorry.
The reasoning is that we, we just haven't had a, and, and a time to get together. And we've got, uh, current existing officers are leaving at various times of the year that cannot remain. So, uh, we just need a little more time to get together as a, as a nominating committee to come up with a proper slate. And we, we know there's other things going on in the background in terms of the future of the planning department and working with county executive and the charter and so forth.
Okay, thank you, Roxanne. Um, planning department reports, Dennis, financials?
Um, the budget will be voted on tomorrow by the legislature. Um, so we'll know for sure where things stand uh, tomorrow for 2022. Um, and then the second, the second piece of that is, is that we'll finish out the year end. We don't have an issue in terms of finishing out the year end in terms of our budget. We will uh, encumber some money uh, in the professional services line to make sure that all our contracts from the Transportation Council uh, can carry over. Uh, we have, I think, at least two contracts that will care, carry over to the new year, and we're out for an RFP. Uh, for one probably prior to the end of the year, and we'll carry that estimated cost of that will carry over as well.
Um, question on that, Mike Baden?
Yep.
Dennis, I know the, the county legislature, the Ways and Means Committee made some budget changes. Did they make any changes on the capital projects plan that you're aware of that?
I am not aware of any, uh, Mike, at all. I'm, I'm, I'm not aware and, and um, I, I'm just, I'm just not aware of, of what, um, what the current support is within the legislature for the changes that were made by the, by the committee as well, so.
Right.
Um, we'll see. I mean, we just have to wait until the, until the vote on December 2nd. Yeah.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Environmental bulletins?
I, I have, um, I, I have nothing to, to add with respect to the environmental bulletins. If anybody has any questions?
All right, communications?
Uh, the only thing, um, I just wanna call attention to is the uh, the, the lead agency request for uh, the Sorgerties relative to local law number two, which is a parking, amends the number of parking spaces. Um, and then also the town of Marble Town, which is uh, Route 209 is an applicant that's, that's gonna, wants to build a lodging facility. Just call attention to those two.
Any staff reports?
So, um, I've got a couple of things I wanna cover with the board. Um, first of all, I, I don't know whether the board is aware, uh, but Mary Ann is, uh, has uh, been out sick. Um, she's, she's had some, uh, fairly serious surgery. She's gonna be out for eight, eight weeks or so. So if you don't get a response, or you, you leave a message on Mary Ann's email or, 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 uh, or voicemail, and you don't get a response right away, please reach out to either Rob or myself or Bert. Um, because we're, we're, we're making do as we go through this. Um, we're doing a lot of, um, a lot of work internally, uh, juggling staff assignments down. I wanna commend the staff, uh, for stepping up and, and making sure that, uh, we've got all the bases covered, even if it's a, it's a little bit slow to, to, uh, to get things accomplished. And we, I talked, I spoke to Mary Ann this morning, or actually this afternoon, and, and she's doing well. Um, but uh, she's got a bit of a recovery to, to go through. So if anybody wants to, uh, you know, reach out to Mary Ann, some of you know, know her, or want, want to send well wishes, just send this to us. We'll make sure Mary Ann gets it. Uh, she's getting some rest right now. She's home. Um, she was in the hospital for almost a week. Um, but, um, she's doing well. So that's, that's the main thing. Um, the other thing I just wanted to cover is that, um, we, we are increasingly, um, consumed with essentially things to do, um, within the, within the office, um, that are somewhat, um, even not expansive with respect to, um, are, are where we, where we've normally been. So we anticipate that the following things will occur or are gonna occur. One is, is that, um, we are finishing up construction on the Midtown Linear Park, but we had to extend that because of the lack of materials associated with our stair tower. Um, so we're going through that process, and if anybody's been involved in a, in a DOT project, it consumes enormous amounts of time with respect to paperwork approvals. We will be starting, hopefully, we've requested PS and E approval from the state, uh, to begin the Kingston Rail Trail construction. We'd probably start that in the spring. We're going through, uh, bid documents right now. We'll probably bid that in the spring. We are currently approving, approving bid documents and awarding bids for the, uh, the, uh, the, the, the public safety radio tower in the town of, in the town of Sorgerties at 35 Quarry Road. We've been asked to assist in, in citing four additional towers throughout the county. Uh, probably two in Shandaken, uh, probably in the, in the areas on the Route 28 corridor, and hopefully at Bel Air if we can get permission from Bel Air. Um, and then two, uh, one in the Rochester area and one in the, uh, and one in the, uh, the Marble Town area. Um, we are also, um, we're also working on an emergency opera, government operations facility in terms of site selection. That's a, that's about a $13 million project. We've been asked to assist, um, and have done the bulk of the work with respect to the RFP for that. Uh, and for, uh, looking at the, uh, looking at the sites that are available that we could cite that, that, um, emergency management center on. That's about a, between a 12 to 13,000 square foot building. Um, that's needed to essentially house our, our, uh, our answer, our 911 center. A, um, a, um, emergency operations center and a, and a government operations center, uh, combined into one, including some critical facilities from our information services department in terms of servers, et cetera. Uh, so it's a data, it's part of it, part of it will be actually be a data center as well. Um, we're also working on, uh, a unified planning work program for the, the Transportation Council. Um, we have, um, begun a call for projects for that. Um, and, um, we would anticipate that we'll have somewhere in a neighborhood of about, um, 950 to 1.2 million dollars in funding for transportation studies moving forward into next year. Um, we are beginning the process of a Route 9W corridor study in the town of Ulster. Um, we are, Bert has just, uh, moved to essentially put together an application for a, uh, an agricultural, a farmland agricultural protection plan, um, with a resolution to hold the, to, to allow us to submit that application sometime in February. Um, we are currently in contract and working on housing, the follow-up to the Housing Action Plan, which is called a Housing Smart Communities Program. Uh, which is a web, which we've hired a consultant to do web design for us, and we're also, uh, using patterns for progress to, to develop the nuts and bolts of that. We're working with RUPCO on an 800 million, an $800,000 housing rehab program. Uh, we've been asked to assist the county executive staff and others with respect to, um, the use of, uh, the ARP funds, which is the American Recovery Act funds. Uh, over the next couple of years, we anticipate that it'll be about four, three to $4 million in housing. Coming from those funds that will run through either our office, uh, or the Ulster County Housing Development Corporation. Um, and then we're involved in a number of other day-to-day activities with respect to, uh, with respect to the, the operations of, of Ulster County Government, being asked a number of different questions. Um, we're exploring work with the legislature on land banks, um, and on, uh, putting, um, taking, uh, properties that are on the, on the tax rolls and moving them off the tax rolls into, into a nonprofit to, uh, rehabilitate those properties and make them available for low and moderate income housing. Um, so what I would say to you is if you don't get our attention, if somebody sends me an email and I don't respond, pick up the phone and call me, and if one of my staff, that, one of the staff doesn't respond, pick up the phone and call them. Everybody is literally flat out, uh, working. Um, we anticipate adding a staff person, um, in the, in the beginning of the year to essentially deal with some of the housing issues. Uh, but we're literally trying to manage multiple boards, multiple projects, and multiple funding sources. Uh, all of which are not, you know, these are not some, these are not, these are all one-off type of projects. We're not building the third bridge or the fourth bridge. We all have, you know, we all know what we're doing. We're all having, go through a learning curve in terms of how to, how to do some of these things. And, and, uh, and quite, as much as, as much as, is, is challenging and, and, uh, and rewarding, it's also time-consuming. Uh, so a lot of us are working weekends and, and working through, uh, late evenings. Um, and, um, a lot of us are being asked to assist in, in areas where we don't normally assist. We played a role in the recent acquisition of Tech City or the, by the, by the county in terms of, uh, its foreclosure process. Um, and we're, will continue to play roles in, uh, the economic development field and in the, and in the housing field and in the, uh, use of American Rescue Funds. Um, I'll just leave it at that. So, uh, we're, we're, we're darn busy and, and we're, and we're happy to busy, be busy. We're happy to have the support of the executive and, and the legislature. But, um, it's a, it's been trying so far. I'll just, I'll leave it at that. And, and just so you know, um, Evelyn Wright was our deputy county executive that we reported to. Uh, Evelyn has notified us that she is leaving the county, um, to seek, uh, other opportunities. And so they're in the process of reorganizing who the, the department, uh, reports to. Um, so we anticipate that that will be Mark Ryder. Um, so we'll be tied in a little bit closer to the DPW folks and the operational issues that Mark handles. Um, as, as, and, and, um, and we'll see how that, we'll see how that goes. We've got a number of transition memos that we're reviewing right now. Um, but we're, we're well prepared for that transition, thanks to Evelyn's diligence, but it's still gonna be a, a bit of a learning curve for all of us.
When is she leaving, uh, Dennis?
I don't know her exact last day. Um, but it's, it's early, it's early this month.
Uh, Dennis, regarding the cell towers in Shandaken, uh, what's the status of that project and who would be the contact person for more information?
Right now, the status of the project is trying to find a place to put them and putting, and getting a, um, and getting a consultant on board to do the sighting work.
And who, who would be, who would be installing them? Would that be, uh, a carrier or, uh?
No, that would be Ulster County as an owner.
Okay.
Right. And we, and we're looking at multiple uses for some of those towers, particularly, uh, cellular in the Route 28 corridor because of the lack of cellular cover, coverage in the Route 28 corridor.
Right, right. Are, are there carriers interested in using them?
That we're too early in the process, Vivian, to tell you that, whether that's the, we need to tower whether the carrier's interested or not. We need to tower for emergency, emergency communications facilities, uh, for our 911 system. So we need those, we need those towers regard, regardless. The question that we have in terms of, in, in terms of the coverage is, um, we wanna make sure that we, when we look at, look at tower loadings, that we have enough, um, structural integrity in the tower that we can load a cellular power, carrier on it, um, if needed in the future. We're also looking at the idea and exploring the idea of what they call point-to-multi-point broadband, so that we could provide broadband in the corridor as well. And that, that's a real question as to whether or not we, what we have to put on the tower as well. There's only so many antenna arrays you can get on the tower. And our 911 facilities take up quite a bit of space on towers.
Right. I, I know we have been having problems getting a carrier willing to put in service on towers, even if we were to provide them. Um, so I didn't know. So you haven't actually gotten any feedback about that?
No, not at all. But if you, if you, if you have any information with respect to the carriers you contacted, we would greatly appreciate that information. I would greatly appreciate that information.
Okay, very good. So I guess we'll work with the, um, town council and the planning board, uh, on this project. I mean, planning board, I guess is not aware of this happening. I don't know about town board.
We haven't, we haven't, it's, it's tough to make the board aware when we haven't picked a site.
Uh, but we, I, we could give you feedback on sites though, correct?
You could. But, but the main thing is, is we're gonna have to do, uh, we're, we're gonna have to do a coverage analysis. If you have any, if you have any sites that you think are good sites, we'd be more than willing to, to look at them.
Very good. Okay, thank you.
And I'm, and we very, very much appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, great.
Hey Dennis, a couple of quick things before I forget. Uh, first, uh, I just wanna offer if, uh, if you need somebody at least to help with the minutes of the, of our meetings or whatnot, since Mary Ann's out, I got a little extra time on my hands. I don't mind, um, helping in that regard. Like, 10 years being on the, uh, doing the Historical Society, uh, board minute, or meeting, Vince. So I, I don't mind stepping up and, uh, help out in every regard.
We'll see what goes. The minutes aren't that difficult, um, mainly because of the, uh, well, thank you for the offer and, and I'll, I'll let you know, Vince.
Yeah, just fair enough. And the other thing that is a question is, what's the status of the, um, traffic signal situation down 208 and, um, 4455 in Gardner? And I ask that because there was a really bad accident there a few hours ago.
Another one? Few hours ago?
Another one. Yep. Very serious. So, it, it, and I think that's like the, and I can go back and look, because I could just call, I was on the fire department. I think that's the second one in, in matter of about a week and a half of time.
Yeah, we've had another accident. I know we had another accident. The, right now, the, the, the signal is under design. It's going to be installed in 2022. Uh, and the, we, we anticipate that the rapid flashing beacons will be installed, uh, come, um, this, uh, this spring, as soon as, as soon as the weather lifts, and the county's in the process of, of purchasing, uh, stop signs. Um, we, there are stop signs on the, on the roadway now. We're in the process of purchasing, um, the, the stop ahead signs that are lighted so that they, people could recognize the fact that there's a stop ahead for the, for the Brunswick Road pieces of, of that, for both approaches to Brunswick Road. We moved to do that last couple of weeks ago. We moved to do those.
Yeah, because the last accident happened about three hours ago and had serious injuries involved.
I mean, uh, well, there's, clearly there's something wrong, but when you walk the site, it's really, you know, we've, we've walked the site, professionals have walked the site. And it's really hard to see why these things keep occurring. It's, it's, we, it's very difficult to understand why they're occurring.
Yeah, I'm just asking, that's all.
But, but I appreciate that, that information. Go ahead, Amanda.
Well, this is, this is just a small thing, but, um, you asked me to, or Mary Ann asked me to remind you about the, the board's responsibility in, um, nominating or naming, uh, you, your position, if it ever comes up.
Um, I'm not sure what Mary Ann is talking about. I mean, the position that the, the, the planning director under the current charter, uh, is appointed, i- is recommended to the legislature by the county executive and, and confirmed by the, by the, by the legislature. The planning board has 90 days to essentially provide for three eligible individuals to the county executive to make that recommendation. I continue to serve at the, at the, uh, at the pleasure of the county executive. The only thing that is, is he can't replace me directly. He has to essentially take the recommendations of the board in order to replace me, to replace me directly. If somebody knows that I'm leaving that I, that I don't know about, I, I appreciate, I appreciate a heads up. Cause I, I haven't been told I'm leaving yet, but I think it seems like everybody else is talking about me leaving.
Yeah, that's news to me. I didn't hear anything.
I hope not.
Yeah. But, uh, so that's, that's how the appointment, that's how the appointment works. It's the let, the, the county planning board has 90 days to, to recommend, uh, three eligible individuals. The county executive is by charter required to pick one of those, um, and then the legislature is, will be asked to confirm.
Yeah, we, we might wanna add that that's unique. Um, other counties don't have that in place. And at the time that the county went to the charter form of government, uh, B. Hevranek was the county attorney. Uh, Gerald Benjamin was helping put the charter together, and we went forward with the presentation. Um, because planning is unique, the field is unique. A lot of people don't understand it. And in order to get the right person in that position, you need some people with knowledge. And of course, we have that on the county planning board. We now have a change in administration. They're not fully knowledgeable of why this is in place. So we are hearing some rumblings of wanting to change it, and so that's another reason why we asked as a nominating committee for additional time. Because we wanna make sure we have the right people in the positions to be able to handle this, should this, uh, come up and be an issue.
I just have a quick question. Don't our rules dictate that we have to act on the officers this month?
You extended the term for a month for a month.
We've extended it, Vince. Right, but it's just going on me. Don't our rules?
We 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 did take we did take action, Vince. We we voted to extend it for one month, so we did take action. And then we're we we will present a new slate next month.
Okay, so we're allowed to do that?
Yes, yeah, the the action was we extended it.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Dennis, back on the cell tower or the the tower. I know you and I talked offline about Rochester. I just I have some new information on that site you and I were talking about, so I'll I'll try to connect with you to fill you in on that.
Okay, great. Dennis, you want to talk about the capital program?
So yes, we sent around. One one is is we had a back and forth with respect to the board on on the cap on the capital program. Last month, we had agreed in terms of how we're going to handle, I think, two or three of the recommendations that that came from the board. I said I did a draft. I sent that draft around to to the board for comment. I've got feedback from several of the board members that they were fine with it. I want to commend Drew Rogers for his really close read. When Mary Ann's not here, I miss my proofreader. And Drew became the proofreader in in terms of both in terms of typos as as well as meaning. So there's been some minor changes to to address those with respect to what what was sent around. They were mostly typos and 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 some word missing here and there. And I really want to thank Drew for doing that. And so I, from where I stand, as far as I know, there are no outstanding comments from board members that have not been addressed in terms of the county planning board's comments on the on the on the capital program. And Drew suggested, and I strongly support this, is that in the cover letter, I drafted a cover letter for Jared Brown. And the cover letter mentions this, that we would want to offer to meet with the legislature and or the executive staff or both to discuss our comments. They will be, it's likely that the legislature will take action on the capital program tomorrow night. So I want to be able to essentially submit this the first thing in the morning and then be able to answer any questions that they have relative to the our comments on the capital program. Although I'm not sure if they're going to have any or not, but the idea of having discussions with them during the year, I think, is is well worthwhile.
And thank you for your help with the comments that I submitted and in their feedback going back and forth.
So with that, Jared, if we if we could get a motion to submit to adopt them and then submit them, that would be that would be helpful.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Vince. Who is the second? Any opposed? Any recusals? Motion passes. Thank you, Dennis, very much.
Okay.
All right. Now's an opportunity for public comment. Does anyone in the general public have anything they would like to?
Please raise your hand if you want to.
Please raise your hand if you do. This is your only chance.
Just not.
Nobody likes us anymore.
Okay. So the comment time is over. Let's go to the zoning referrals. But Robert, you ready?
I am. Just give me one second.
I'm not rushing you.
I'm just saving my minutes before I switch to the do a little double duty. There we go. Share my screen. Okay, everybody see the presentation?
Yes.
So we're ready. You're muted, Jared.
I'm off now. All right. Were there any recusals? From Ellenville?
All right, Village of thanks. Village of Ellenville is a zoning map amendment. This is for a single lot. It's currently zoned I two. And they want to rezone to be three. It's at the corner of Clinton and Center Street. This is the map that they provided us, which really doesn't give you that great of context. So I'll I did a little mapping to help us out here. So the site in question, and what you're seeing in those colors is the land use under it. So this is the parcel in question here. There's an existing building that is more retail oriented use. And as you can see, the red means, just to go through it real quick, bright yellow is residential land use, is current land uses. The light yellow or orange is vacant. The blue is a community service. And I think I got them all. Yeah, and the red is a commercial. So you can see that the parcel is currently in the I two district. Now you can see that these parcels boxed in over here are residential mostly. And these property class codes of all these parcels that are located to the north of this bigger parcel are actually land use is vacant residential. So there's that. Also, if you see this dotted line here and here, so that is the B three zone that they want to come into. This would be a lateral move across the zoning district. It really isn't a usually what we see are these natural extensions of a zoning district. This isn't it. So in this case, this looks like spot zoning. And what we recommend instead, there's an opportunity here, especially since you see these, this is an existing housing development. This is existing housing. This is existing multifamily housing over in here where I'm pointing. Opportunity to really that what we need to send back to the community is look at your comprehensive plan, look at your zoning more thoughtfully in this instance, and consider a more extensive rezoning, especially parcels along the frontage that might be more conducive to yes, this parcel here looks better as retail or commercial than industrial use, but it needs to be part of the bigger whole. And also, an extension of looking at their how they do the residential to extend a residential would be wise as well. So they really want to rethink this, not do it as a spot zone, but do it more as a whole process. So that, let me clear my annotations here. So that would be a required modification. So we wanted to do a broader rezoning that concerns the comprehensive plan. And to avoid the spot zoning.
Motion to accept staff recommendations.
Made that motion.
Second was okay, thank you. Okay, any abstentions? Any objections? Motion passes. City of Kingston, any recusals?
All right. City of Kingston, we have Stavo Industries. We reviewed this many years ago, probably about ten years ago, when they did this redo this here on Flatbush Avenue, City of Kingston. This is your building back in here. And what you're doing is a five thousand five hundred square foot expansion of an existing structure to support a growing business. We go to the plan. So it's one fifty two hundred. That was all by three hundred off the top of my head. Just to do that. So that's existing conditions. And that's the expansion. So it's all the way in the back, located far away from the road, adjacent to the railroad tracks in an existing office manufacturing industrial district. Lighting is LED full cutoff. That's just the zoom in of it. No changes to the drainage. They do account for it. As you can see, new roof drains and a new proposed drywall is over there. That's the existing conditions. And so staff recommends no county impact on this.
Motion to support staff, McLaughlin.
Second, Vivian.
McLaughlin, Walton, Dennis, if you're writing it down.
I got it. Yeah, working on it.
I have a motion and second. Any abstentions? Any discussion? Any objections?
So I had a question. So I I forgot on this one. They have sufficient parking space with this. This is an office addition?
Warehouse.
Warehouse. Okay, never mind.
Yeah, I mean, there's no increase in staff. It's just more room for them to do their business.
No objections? Motion passes. Town of Marbleton. Any recusals?
Hanson, recruiting.
Thank you. Were you on both together?
Ah, yes, please. Special permit and site plan. As you can see, the if you haven't noticed, the parcel viewer has been updated. We now have twenty twenty one photos. Plus, we also have the twenty sixteen infrared photos on the site. And this is great moment for it to not work. All right, I'm just going to go to my PowerPoint. Okay, so we have a special permit, site plan review for a proposed lodging facility with ten guest rooms. It's going to be over two six thousand square foot buildings of different dimensions. One is two hundred by thirty. And there'll be guest rooms with bathrooms on suite. And they're calling for a rustic modern structure. One problem is we don't have any architectural details regarding it. So I don't know what rustic modern is. That'll be one to require modifications. Sixty by a hundred, single story building for ancillary activities and programs, not to find. It says it'll be using LED dark sky compliant lighting. I don't have a lighting plan with respect to it. John, so this is the site plan. So I'll, if the aerial would come up, it's south of Stone Ridge. It's adjacent to the Ag District. Let me see if I can get the aerial back up. Ah, there we go. Aerial's back up. Good. So it's this parcel and this parcel in here. Does have some vegetation along the frontage. These are, all of these are Ag District parcels over in there.
And that's across the street from Lydia's Rob, is right. Is that correct?
Exactly. Yeah, the um, yeah, that's exactly.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, so you have that. I'll go back to PowerPoint. So this is a site plan. So a lot of questions are unanswered by the site plan. Drainage, elevations, curb cut details, parking details, ADA, don't know what the surface of the parking area is going to be. Don't have a lighting plan. Don't have a landscaping plan. I don't know if why we saw those existing vegetation along the frontage. Don't know if that's to remain or not. So there's a lot of questions with respect to it. This is the sum total of the site plan I have. Special permit. I mean, I'll need a, where's the well? Where's the septic? Big questions. So staff recommends a re-referral with a lighting plan, landscaping plan, also letting us know that existing vegetation is to remain. Architectural details stamped by a licensed architect. Access details, they should coordinate with NYSDA. They should have an internal access plan that also refers to pedestrian access between the two buildings. Parking layout, including ADA compliant parking. The stormwater details, I don't know what the level, the limits of disturbance of it are. I don't know how much is going to be stirred with this. The EAF came up with a checkmark yes on flood plains. It's it's off to the west. Mr. Conroy, can you unmute again? You get a lot of feedback. Okay, also our sustainability comment. There's also a long ear bat came up on it, but I don't have an endangered species analysis. And I don't have any signage either. So a lot more details.
Is it incomplete, Rob?
We don't issue any completes. We issue required mods and tell them to re-refer and actually do a site plan.
Motion to support staff. Watkins.
Thank you. Drew's second. Any abstentions? Any objections? Any further discussion? Motion passes for required mod for re-referral, re-referral. Thank you. Villa Ginupal, any any recusals?
Mr. Murray came on or not?
Yep, I'm recusing.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So this is a site plan review for a single family home. No county impact on it, but just a this is a little detail I got for a single family home on a site plan. It showed me where the wetlands are. It showed me what elements are in the rain garden down to a little different landscaping details. So level detail is important. Okay, but no county impact on a single family home.
Vote to support staff recommendation.
Theo's second.
Thank you. Any abstentions? Any objections? Any discussion? Motion passes, no county impact. Oliver, do I have any recusals?
All right. Sailor Mill Farm, we saw this before. As a thirteen lot solution, it's outside five hundred feet, so advisory comments only. It's since come back and they've reached an agreement with believe they were basically sued over it. And they've come back to an agreement. And this is their, what they've come back is the settlement between all the parties involved. So they've reduced it from thirteen lots to eighteen lots of six point three six four three acres. They've addressed all our previous comments with which were identifying wetland boundaries. They will still allow accessory dwellings on it. And also, they answered the stormwater question and the conservation question. They're a part of the deed. So staff recommends, and this is, I'll just show you the changes. This is what we saw the first time, thirteen lots. Now it's eight. Lot more conservation going on. And no county impact is staff recommendation.
Motion to approve staff comments, Mike Baden.
Second, McLaughlin.
Second.
Baden McLaughlin.
Rob, Rob, a question. When you said this was a settlement out of a court, did it, did the thirteen lot get approved and then they?
No, no, I don't think they did. I think they I think they had a long discussion about.
Okay, just it was curiosity.
So you can answer that question.
Yeah, they negotiated not going to court is what they did.
Okay, got it. It's a it's a much better design.
Yes.
Do I have any abstentions? Any further discussion? Any objections?
This is Vivian. I'm just wondering what the basis for the lawsuit was.
If you want, i- if I had to render opinion, it was because they could.
Yes.
But someone was objecting to the configuration or the size or?
Traffic, community impact.
I believe it was mostly on the conservation basis, really, and environmental impacts standpoint.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any motion passes. Thank you. Town of Sargertis, any recusals?
Yes, Slavity.
Thank you.
Alright, town stories. Town stories has several different um zoning changes for industrial business uses. And so the overall goals for them were there's some applying new standards to the industrial OLI, which is their light industrial district. Uh, some regulation accessory uses townwide that's accessory to more commercial, not this doesn't have to do residential. And you're also gonna see your first uh regulation of cannabis establishments and are limiting them to the I O L I G B and HB districts. They added a couple new district uh uses, an organic composting facility, which they have a bunch of special permit standards which are compliant with and New York State D C regulations. They're adding a wholesale trade category to the GB zone. But this allowing vehicle motors and scrap or waste materials in the HB. Now, a lot of these new uses, they're not defining them elsewhere in the definitions, including the cannabis one. So our first required modification is gonna be, they need to it it's great that they're adding them to their zoning code, but they should also define them in the definition section of Arizona statute. Okay, so this is the cannabis establishment. One, um let's see, how much should I go through the new Merta law? So does everybody know that municipalities have until the end of the year to opt out of this regular, of the uh of this? Uh tap. So municipalities right now are deciding uh whether they can opt out of having this and it's basically opting out of also taking part in this, the tax sales tax, that's part of it. Uh, if they opt out, it doesn't preclude them from opting back in. But if they don't opt out by the thirty first, they can never opt out. So that's something to take into consideration. Uh, there's also within that law order, a lot of it is all managed by what is called the ca- cannabis control board of the state New York. So there's a lot of different regulations. Anyone applying for a cannabis license is gonna have to go through before they even get to applying board level. So there's a lot of detail there. Um, the law did provide for certain buffer requirements. It's similar, the way it's regulated is similar to uh beer and wine sales or in with the buffer requirements, uh adult uses. They did provide in the state law of five hundred foot from educational services that that was acceptable. They also said two hundred feet of the house of worship. That's nothing to preclude a municipality from increasing those buffer distances. But there's also another clause in there which I'll get to later, which is similar to, it basically says it can't be so um as it can't be so restrictive as so as to zone them out. Or at least like if you put one in town, there has to be at least room for others to uh to uh have uh those kind of businesses. So special permit, license them through the cannabis control board of state New York. This is consistent with uh their regulations, the activities have to be indoors. The town is suggesting a five hundred lot line of ed- educational service and a one half mile from a religious organization or institution instead of the uh two hundred feet that the state statute is saying, or also saying one mile from the nearest of any other cannabis establishment. So we're just gonna put some words of caution to the town that they should really map it out and see if they've effectively zoned it out. Make sure they haven't done that because that might be in violation of the state statute. See. Other new uses indoor agriculture, brewery, winery, distillery. Again, they didn't define them. So they should add them to the definition section. Accessory uses, they're pretty standard accessory use details. There's no county pa- impact on this portion of the law, but basically you have to follow criteria being subordinate to the principal use. Typically or typically incidental to the principal use, same ownership on the same parcel, you know? So based some standard accessory use kind of language. And then they also added some language for standards for uses in the OLI and I districts. Um, the town already had a twenty percent pervious uh requirement for the OLI district, so they added and they require that to be in natural vegetation, landscaping or lawn. They added pervious pavement as a another option for applicants. Uh, they also gave the planning board uh leeway to increase buffers from the buildings to reduce impacts on the joint properties, residential districts or zones. Uh, they also added, specifically added noise, odor, lighting impacts to the scope of the plan board review. Technically, it's part of secret. Those are already in there, but they're really just spelling them out. So it's really clear. Uh, they also increased the maximum building height in the I district from forty to sixty feet. And increased the maximum lot coverage from thirty percent to thirty-five percent. So required modifications. One comment I had, this is, the comment I'm making is consistent with state law. Which basically says you can ha- if you're having a cannabis establishment, which is basically either um new some products onsite or sales, you can have access to uh elsewhere in the building. So if it's a part, say it's a storefront in the building, it can only be accessed from one way in or basically from the outside in. There can't be any back room access or anything like that. So I just wanna make sure that their access to the, these uses are consistent with the state law. Uh, as I said before, they should add the definitions of anything that, especially the cannabis use. That's con- so it's consistent with the New York State law definition to their definition sections. And this goes for all the other new uh uses they're putting in. They should be put in defined and clearly defined, put in their definition section of state of the town law. And this comes back to my question. I was just querying about the one half mile use for religious uses where the state only says two hundred feet and or mile separation between cannabis establishments. And this language I have there that basically is what the state law says, which is need to ensure that after the law is adopted, that there's reasonable alternative locations remain available for other licensed dispensaries or onsite conception establishments. And they can't be considered unreasonably impracticable. So the the town will have to really look at it, make sure they've done that. And that's my comments.
Rob, a question on the access, but I think you may have answered it in looking at your the the access. That's just for public access, so they can, they don't have to have delivery access there.
Right, like I said, it's unless restricted to employees, agents or other method, method approved by the uh cannabis control board.
I got one, this is true. I got one quick question on the cannabis thing. Does the state law allow them to make the restrictions tighter? Then then uh like the two hundred foot, but?
Um, there's nothing that says they can't make them strict, but generally speaking uh towns are allowed to uh make different provisions more stricter at their own.
Drew, that's under home rule. You're you're allowed under home rule to make it more restrictive. You just can't make it less, but you can't make it unreasonable, as Rob said, it can't make it unreasonably impractical.
Right.
Okay.
So. But when you adopt it, if you're, if you are making it more stringent, I I believe you have to call that out in your wo- in your local laws, in your, in the wording of the local law that you are invoking home rule.
Municipal home rule law, that's correct, Mike. Actually, you know what? Let's make that an advisory comment. Let's make sure they invoke uh municipal home rule law then when they do this. So make that an advisory.
Any more discussion?
I would like to thank Rob for doing such a thorough review on that. I really appreciate that.
You're welcome.
I agree.
Do we? Do we have a motion that I missed, guys?
We do know.
Second, McCarthy.
So Vivian was, Vivian was the motion?
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, it was Mike Baden. Just, just a curiosity, was this the result of a committee or do you know, or how did Sargertis arrive at these?
I don't know, actually. I I think they have, do have a committee at the local that's zoning. Um, zoning, zoning. I mean, they recently just adopted their uh comprehensive plans. I think they're really trying to roll out a lot of new laws and
Yeah.
react to their comprehensive plan.
Yeah, there was a committee that was put together uh by the town board. And it's got various stakeholders on it and as a result.
Yeah, it's it, I only ask because it looks like it was pretty well thought about and researched other than the separation. And I understand why they're going about it and maybe they actually did map it out, but it's, it's a good comment to make sure that they do make sure it it's it's physically possible.
That that's basically my comment. I'm just curious if they mapped it or not too.
Yeah, there, yeah, there was a committee put together, Rob, to do this.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second. Any extensions? Any objections? Motion passes with required mods. Thank you. And uh advisory comments. Uh, village of Sargertis, do I have any recusals?
Yeah, I have to, McLaughlin.
Okay, thank you, Vince.
Farmy.
I said, thank you.
Alright. Uh, village authorities local law number two of twenty twenty-one. It's a simple, on the surface amendment to increase residential parking requirements. So the current zoning requires one family is, one family gets two parking spaces per unit or is required to have two used parking spaces per unit. And rowhouse two family, multifamily are required to have one and a half per unit. The new law requires one per bedroom for all types. I'll let that sink in for a sec. So that would be that I have a three bedroom home. That would require me to have three bed, three, three parking spaces. If I had a four bedroom home, that would require me to have four parking spaces. If I didn't have a driveway, I'm not sure what that would do. I should note that the B one district has no off-street parking requirements. Uh, housing for the elderly also is a waiver where it's only required to do one per every two units. Uh, joint use, which really doesn't apply to a uh residential unless I guess there's a mixed use component where you can do joint use parking. Uh, also pre-existing uses and structures are actually exempt. But if it's already less than the requirement, they can't be reduced further. So there's probably a lot of leeway already out there in the village where this may not impact that many places, especially if they're already existing. That said, anything that's new, a new single family house would suddenly require four spaces. And then on top of it, if you have short-term rentals or accessory uses, and it might, that it would, it definitely impact if you're gonna have an accessory dwelling unit, then you have yet another parking space requirement. So given the benefit that is derived from that, uh staff actually recommends this be dis- dis- disapproved. Because it's overly, it, I don't know what the benefit they're trying to achieve from this, but the, it would seem that it's overly restrictive to having larger families or having, or overly restrictive to multifamily uses. Um in fact, we'd go as far to say that there should be advisory comments for multifamily. They should be given that waiver section should be uh expanded. They should be given broader waiver discretion at the playing board level to disguise case by case basis, depending on site constraints, topography, environment, things of that issue. And also they, if they are providing affordable housing, that could be seen as like, there's, for example, town of Sopas is certain provisions within that uh floating zone there. They, if you meet those provisions, then you don't have to have as much parking where you might have, there are certain bonuses that you get as a result of it. So they should look at it a little.
I agree, Rob, that's I agree, Rob, that's awfully restrictive, man. That's crazy. Yeah, I'll ma- I'll make a motion to accept these comments and disapprove.
Second, Vivian.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I'm, I'm wondering, are they trying to make a law that applies mostly to new construction? Are they, are they actually um allowing existing conditions to continue?
Well, there's a waiver provision for anything that's existing. So most of the villages existing, so but anything, any uh any expansions, anytime anybody wants to do expansion, they're, they're gonna find their parking requirements are substantially greater than the majority of the community.
Okay. Is, is there a, a serious parking problem in Sargertis?
Yes.
There can be at times.
I mean, overnight parking or?
It's, it's hard to say, Vivian. We, we, we've got no we've got no background with respect to why it's changed and it's
Yeah, there was no.
We're not, we're not aware of any zoning statute in the county that requires parking spaces based on a number of bedrooms.
Yeah, it, it does seem uh unreasonable to me.
Yeah.
Hey, do I have um any extensions to this? Any objections? Okay, motion to disapprove is for single family and the advisory comments is passed.
I can put back in our comments question about, eh, when we get zoning statute changes, the purpose section is very important. You should this is the reason, here's the background information, this is why we're doing it. So I, I, I might put that back down too. Alright, town of Shandaken.
Yeah, Shandaken. Do I have any?
I recuse Vivian.
Okay, Vivian, thank you. Is this for both of them?
Yes.
Thank you.
Here we are, town of Shandaken. This is the Shandaken Inn. Just to give you a sense where we are. Route twenty-eight, Creekside Drive. Lower Golf Course Road is where we're, this, the inn is located. On the surface, you know, the uh what's being proposed is not that substantial. Uh, so it's an expansion of existing inn just for a new spa building. Uh, lighting updates and they're gonna be doing LED dark sky compliant fixtures. They have, they're doing a lot of ballards, things that we're seeing in other location. This is Peak Engineering who did um run out golf course, so it's a similar treatment. The length, the length is good. So I'll just take you through the site plan. So they are also as part of that and not referable. As part of our exception agreement, they are doing a lot line consolidation. So an existing town road here, Golf Course Road. It is an interesting road. Basically crosses the county right away. Which is the uh rail trail over here, where rail here, corridor here. And I'll, I'll get to a little bit about that later, but what you're seeing here is one, two, three, four cabins, a parking space reach cabin. Here's a fourth cabin over here. Uh, new store, um water facilities. Uh, septic facilities, excuse me, and uh new spa buildings being located here. And there's also, of course, access throughout the property and limits of disturbance. There's gonna be less than a disturbance for the site. Our comments though are actually um based off of um a site visit that was conducted by our office in Department Environment about a year ago. Where they were walking the trail over here and noticing different things that occurred on the trail and I'm gonna show them to you. So this is the right away behind it. This is Phil. This is the camera right away where the railroad track is. They basically filled in over the county right away. Again. That's what they did. There's also signage in here. And the person and the, apparently our knowledge is that the Shandaken Inn encourages the use of a water hole further down and points them in the direction of that. And that water hole is only approved actually for angling use. So it's only for fishing use. And but they're pointing down to go take a swim and something that's for fishing only. So we're gonna have some significant comments on that. So at the moment staff recommends a disapproved until that fill the county right ways removed those and from the tracks. Um, that they remove a reference to the parking location. There's, as you see in here, there's a a parking, gravel parking location on the county right away. Unless they have a license or an agreement from the, from the county, which we're not aware of. They can't have that there. So that need, that note needs to be removed from the site plan.
So Rob, I mean, do we really want to disapprove this, Rob? Do you really just, just make a required modification, my sense?
Uh, yeah, I never got back to you on that. So we could, let's make it a required mod. Okay.
Yeah, required modification is basically you, you're, you're showing access to the site and 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 other things on the site that literally you, you've, you've disturbed property that you don't own. And, and since it's own. And, and since it's owned by the county, we wanna make sure that you clean it up. Uh, and get it out of there.
Right. So there's apparently signage on the county right-of-way as well. So the signage should be removed. Encroachment should be removed, reference should be removed. This is all required modifications now. Also, final approval for Ulster County Health Department for, uh. Regardless of, um, this is better, see, it works better as a required mod anyway, for, uh, for septic. Also, New York City, City D E P needs to be contacted for stormwater. And septic. So need approvals there, and also a copy of that final lot line consolidation plot. That we haven't received already.
I'll make a motion to support staff as a, your required mod.
Yeah, we'll second that.
Dennis, or Rob, a, a question on this. Could we, can we split it and disapprove? The fill in the county right-of-way and do a required mod on the balance of it? Because I understand why you don't wanna disapprove the Health Department and D E P comments, but. You know, as the county planning board, we are the county's representative, and if we're made aware of, of. Essentially an illegal action that's taking place. I think just for doing a required mod isn't strong enough. But I don't know if you can split it like that.
Well, I mean, I, I'm not sure what you've accomplished. I mean, I, I hear what you're saying is. You know, this may be, it, it doesn't look like it's an inadvertent fill. You're correct. I mean, we could write this in a really strong language.
Right.
You know, I, I don't know whether they've talked to anybody at the county and got permission to do this. In some way, shape, or form. We're not aware of any filed, any filed permits or easements relative to it.
Right. I mean, the way I would, you don't get any benefit, added benefit from this.
Okay, okay.
The benefit's the same. So I, I would write it in such a way as. This, I mean, I could write it from a denial perspective. This should be. If this is not removed, does it require modification? The rest should not go forward until this is removed.
Yeah, and, and, and the point being is, is the, the planning board in, in Shandaken, the, the warning here to the planning board in Shandaken is, is you're approving. You know, you're approving a, a site plan that literally shows encroachment on a property that, that the, that the applicant doesn't own. And, and he's provided no proof to the planning board that he has the right to do that. And that should be enough for the Shandaken Planning Board to say you can't show that on a site plan. And, and to the extent that there, that there's encroachment, there should be something that says, um. There should, should be something that says that, you know, that it comes out, you know?
Which, which county?
DPW.
So should we, are we allowed to notify them of this encroachment? So at least they.
We always do, yeah. They'll, they'll, they'll receive a, yeah, they'll receive a, a recommendation, the, the recommendation.
Okay.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
This is Mitchell Cohen. I just had a quick point to bring out. Um, I know you wanna, the, the fill that was done there, uh, without the county's permission, but why isn't the county? Um, having stakes put out there so that they can identify what belongs to the county? So that when they decide to mitigate that, they know exactly how far back they need to remove it.
So, um, the short answer is, is that you, you wouldn't require that of any other property owner. You know, you would basically require the property owner himself to essentially establish the boundary line of the property and, and have a survey property line. So I think it's unfair to basically say the county should do that. And the other thing I would say is, is that, you know. I'm not, I'm not suggesting that they have to remove it to the property line. I think that they should have to remove it so that we can get a trail through there or something through there. In the future, and there may be an opportunity to, to essentially give him a, you know, give him a permit to, to encroach to a certain extent because. My suspicion is, is that this is, this is at least a thirty-foot right-of-way, and the entire road is on our property.
Well, we're on the same sheet of music, at least with the rail trail.
Yeah, yeah. So I, I, I'm not, I don't wanna punish the, I don't wanna punish the person to say that. You know, he shouldn't have access back through here, but I do wanna basically say that we have a responsibility to re- to retain a through movement through here. In some way, shape, or form, and he should be put on notice that, that this kind of encroachment doesn't stand and it has to come out.
Dennis, I have a little follow-up on that. So the Shandaken Planning Board. Does have the right to override us by a supermajority vote. If they were to do that, what recourse does the county have to do something about it?
Well, the, the, the county could. Put them on notice that, that, you know, two things. One is the county could put them on notice that, that, um, that. That the, the encroachment's incurring. And, um, unlike private landowners, a municipality is not something to latch, is not subject to something called latches, which is. They can't claim over time that essentially that they have an, uh. A, uh, an inverse, inverse possession right on, on the property. So if, and if and when we need to move them, we would move them, you know, I, so. The, the real issue for the Shandaken Planning Board is I don't know how, looking at this, the Shandaken Planning Boards comes to the conclusion that the site plan is. Is, is to the extent that they have to, that the site plan has the necessary property rights to be approved. You know, and, and, and even if, I mean, even if it's just a question is prove, prove that you have those property rights. You know, and if they don't, then, you know, the, the, the condition is, is that. Obtain those property rights, and if you can't, you, you need to, you need to do something here. You know, I, I'm not suggesting that we would be. I wouldn't wanna suggest that the county would not take, would not take something into account with respect to allowing access to occur. But I, but the, the, the amount of fill here and the fact that it's actually shown as a public parking area right across the, the railroad track, that just, that just shouldn't stand.
Right. Okay, thanks.
So in the strong comments.
Rob, what, what other comment? I'm quest here. I've been a trout fisherman for years. And that piece of water is above the portal. It's not D E P water at all. So that water is open to anybody who wants to use it, whether they wanna swim in it or fish in it. There's, there's nothing in the Asopus guidelines anywhere that says you can't swim in that water. It's only in the reservoir that you can't swim in it.
Okay, I had something from, uh, former Department Environment employee. There was a letter, there's. I, I'd have to pull it out, but there was something in there. It was, it looked, it. I'd, I'd, I'd have to pull it out, but it was.
But just so.
It looked like it was, it was so, the way.
What ends up happening is, is there are along the. Asopus, there are areas that have public fishing rights. And those public fishing rights are restricted to fishing only. And, and to the extent that the landowners have granted those rights and/or the, the Department of Environmental Conservation. Has granted those rights. They're, they're the ones, it's not D E P. There's the ones that essentially say it's, the restriction here is to fishing only. You may be right, it may not apply here, and it's not an important issue, but I, you may be right, Frank, it may not apply here. But the main thing is, is that, you know, we have. We have a, a, a property owner that is directing people to another, another person's property in order to do recreation. And if that was open and, 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 and available, then that's fine, but other than that. I, I, I don't know what to say. And if that, that causes, if that causes some concern, we can remove the comment, but.
No, I, I just read it was, I just read it. It was basically exactly what you said. It's under New York State fishing rights. And that, that is the only use that was allowed there was.
And I think that's where it's from, um.
Yeah.
Okay, if it's actual fishing only, then I'll go along with it.
Yeah, that, that's where it's about, Frank. Thank you for that, though.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you. Schwangunk, do I have any recusals?
This is an area variance nods for a point one-six minimum acreage variance for two lots of vision. Um, just on this note, I think next year I'd like to. Maybe have a subcommittee discuss, uh, the exception agreement, because this is one that falls beneath the cracks where we. Don't require referrals for rear yard or side yard residential variances, but probably minimum acreage variance is probably should. Or at least some of them within certain thresholds and shouldn't get here either. So no kind of impact on this.
Hold on, excuse me, Rob. I think I have to recuse myself because this has to come to the planning board. I don't know why it's at the Z B A first. So Watkins recuses himself.
Thanks, Mark.
Staff recommends no kind of impact.
More from the sports staff, McLaughlin.
Second, Mike Baden.
Hey, any further discussion? Abstentions? Objections? Motion passes. Um, Ulster, any recusals?
I'm quested on all four.
Thank you.
All right, so again. I think I'm gonna do them all together. The Mose, the site plan and the special apartment and a site plan all together. This, they just work together well. So this is Hurley Avenue, Town of Ulster. Three seven here, former Coleman High School. There, and this is a former fueling station, convenience store here. All you have left is basically the foundation. And a, um, container that's basically graffiti over in the location there, has existing curb cuts with DPW. What they wanna do is put, the area variance portion of it is put in, they wanna. They're gonna put an area variance right at the zero line in the front yard setback, and they want it to be eight feet.
It's a fence, right, Rob?
What's that?
It's a fence, right?
It's a fence.
Okay.
It's a fence. Yeah, it's a fence. And then it's gonna be used car sales. They're gonna be putting a, um. Mobile kind of trailer on site for their used car sales operation. All right, let me go to my slides. So, okay. Tanks aren't removed. They do have a process from New York State D E C for the removal that they will have to follow those regulations. To remove those tanks, so that's we require mod. Um, let's see. Let me get to it. So this is the site plan. So. We already have existing access, so that's not an issue with respect to it, but. They basically took like, what it looks like a stamping thing and put about a hundred cars on here. So what they need to do is define how many cars are gonna be on site. Put spaces for the display ones, provide for ADA accessible parking. And also for customer parking. So they really need to define. How parking's gonna occur and how, uh, traffic's gonna flow on the site. Uh, laying details are lacking. Um. I don't have anything with respect to, uh, septic at the location. Actually, do I have municipal warrants around here? I might be, I hit myself. Nope.
I think this is in a water district, right?
This is, it, it might be, I don't know.
Septic, I'm pretty sure of that.
It needs septic. That's for sure. So just things, um, what we'd ask them to do, instead of granting eight-foot variance on the fencing, they should. Do six feet and do landscaping along the frontage as best as possible. Uh, it's also lucky on, so that's the required modification with respect to the, uh, area variance. Do you guys wanna do that first? Or should I just continue on?
No, it doesn't take a separate vote on these, Rob.
Yeah, so. So move, Mike Baden.
Second, Watkins.
So the landscaping's only in the front of the fence? There's nothing on this, I mean, there's nothing on the sides?
Uh, that's part of the variance for the, uh. We can talk about a landscaping plan. They, they're showing green space on this.
Is that what the green is? That's what the green is supposed to be?
Right, I think we'll talk about the. Site plan aspects after we talk about the variance aspects. Right now, we're just talking about really the fence.
All right, sorry.
Okay, so I have a motion. I have a second. Do I have any abstentions? Further discussion? Abstentions? Okay, motion passes.
So. I'd like to see a re-referral. And in fact, it was interesting because the, uh, town planners' comments were. Not to submit this for referral until they had a final site plan. This is what we got back, sorry for scrolling, as an updated site plan. Now, I don't think this is what. The town's planner had in mind. It's not a engineered site plan at all, so. It's just a survey with some drawings on it. Uh, so I'd recommend they re-refer it. That they're gonna remove the tanks, they do compliant New York State D E C regulations. Health department approval of any septic, if it's existing or otherwise. Uh, site plan should be developed to town standards and have all the elements that town also requires on the site plan. Uh, lighting details will need to be provided. Eh, and like I said about the parking, ADA compliant parking locations, they should limit the number of cars, they should define the display locations. And the customer and staff parking as well. There's an existing container on the site that should be removed. Any cleanup, site cleanup should be basic as part of it. That, you know, they should develop the site, the site plan to the town standards, and they should consider a signed engineered plan. It's part of it.
I have a question. Um, it looked like from the aerial view, there was a large empty lot next to it. I wonder if they have access to that for vehicles?
I think so. It's not, it's not in the site.
It's a different lot. I don't know who owns, I can. That Central Hudson owns that, so I don't think they have access to that.
Okay.
Motion, McCarthy?
Second, Drew.
Thank you, Drew. Any abstentions? Any further discussion? Objections? Motion passes. Required mods. Thank you. Frank, now we're on Thompson Tech Park.
All right. This is our last one of the evening, so. All right, Thompson Technology Park. This is nine W, well, it's the Eastchester Extension. Town building grounds, Kiefer Lane. We reviewed a number of things back in here. Recycling, the, uh, the, uh, gun range is back in here. And this site here, and actually we're right next to Stabo, which we just reviewed at the beginning of the meeting. So that's the city thing. So they come full circle here. So we have Thompson Technologies. And I forget, eh, what was, what was it that there, uh, that was done on site, Dennis?
They're doing, they make freeze-dried, uh, products.
R and D related to freeze-dry. It's using medical oper- so it's really interesting, kinda high-tech stuff. Um, what then, a successful business, they're looking to do an expansion of it. And. So forty-nine Kiefer is gonna get a ninety by fifty warehouse addition. Thirty-nine Kiefer is gonna get a twenty, and I'll, you'll see this on the site plan. Uh, twenty by eighty-five warehouse addition plus a two-story twenty by fifty five, fifty-five. Edition, so. And. Again, we have a very limited kind of site plan here. Doesn't need any variances. But, so you have addition to the front for the additional office space. Additional warehouse space along the side of this building here, and more additional warehouse space over here. Uh, exist, this, all the green spaces is existing. They're not proposing any additional landscaping. They're not really changing anything in here. Uh, let's see.
Robert, can you go, this is Mitchell Cohen. Can you go back to the previous page? Yeah. No, the other, the diagram. There was something prior to this.
You mean the aerial?
Yeah, is that?
Probably the aerial, Rob.
No, 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 no. You, you had it the page with all the, um, comments.
Comments. You mean, my inter?
Right there.
Nope, right there. Is that eighty-five-inch warehouse addition?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that typo.
Okay.
We give the typos.
It's a, it's, it's, it's long and thin.
Yep.
Really, really thin.
As are the workers.
And. Okay, so we got this. Where was I? Okay, and this is the elevation. This is, and that's. Some research, you know, this is architectural elevation. You know, all architectural work needs to be done by a licensed architect, so I'd like to see a stamp plan by an architect here, in this case, so. So, required modifications. They should update the lighting plan for it. Um. See what ways are including incorporating sustainability as part of the expansion of this project. And also, they should do, make sure their plan meets the town standards as well. And the, uh, architectural elements of it should be, uh, signed by a licensed architect.
So I, I just wanna add to the board that we wanna write this, that we strongly support this expansion. These are the kinds of businesses that we really wanna see expand in Ulster County. Um, but the, the main concern here, quite frankly, is. We don't know, given what we got here, we don't know where things are. You don't know where the, any of the utilities are. You don't know where there's, where anything is on the site, so. You really wanna make sure that you're not making any mistakes here and covering something up that they shouldn't be covering up. Or if they are, at least they know about it and they're providing for it. Those, those are the, those are the main things that you're, you're really concerned about.
Right, so updated drainage plans, updated. Right, so updated drainage plans, updated stormwater, updated showing us where existing utility. And any changes those proposed utility lines go.
Motion to sports staff, McLaughlin.
Wait, have a second.
Second, Vivian.
Second.
So I would see on their plan, I mean, their standard plan should have, you know, what are the 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 area requirements? As far as the size and dimensions of the buildings and the parking requirements, because I couldn't tell if what they were showing was. The required parking or the, what's, it says fourteen and thirty, is that? Does that meet the requirements or not, I couldn't tell.
You're you're correct, Amanda, there there should be a, there should be a.
There should be a bulk, there should be a.
Yeah, there should be a conformity table, that what they call conformity table, that basically says, here's what this, here's what the zoning requires, here's what's proposed. I mean, and you're right, and and we'll, we can add that comment, but the main thing is, is. I just wanted to make sure that the town, the town knows where all this stuff is out here, and somebody knows where all the utilities are there. Shouldn't utility plan in here where things are going, you know?
I have a question on the map of the plan that we're on, on number one addition, there's some cross hatching, I don't know what that represents. In the blue area, number one.
Loss of greens.
It says uh. Blue areas represent the new additions uh cross hatch.
That's where the green area would be taken away.
Correct.
Yeah, they're reducing some of the green area, I guess. Permeal soil loss, like maybe that's what it refers to.
Yeah.
Rob, can you go back to the site, could you go back to the aerial just to show everybody, I know it's the last one we've got.
You know, just show you, it's really an industrial office parked in here, so landscaping isn't that big of a concern at this location. And you can't see this from here, you can see the buses as you come by, but you can't see that.
So that wouldn't be a a problem with drainage then for that?
No, I mean, well, there there are drainage issues here, but most of the area they're looking at already is already a.
The drainage issues down by the track.
Already paved over, you know, that's why we made the stormwater comment.
Right.
But the but the main thing is, is to show you that, you know, the expansion down here in terms of density or in terms of design issues. Not not really, no really big issues in in here, the main issue is is trying to make sure that the site actually functions from a technical basis. This used to be a, I think this used to be a, I hate to say, this used to be a um. Landscaping place, as I recall.
Yeah, they used to be Frank's.
Yeah, re retail, retail landscaping, right? Thank you.
All right, I have a motion, I have a second. Any more discussion?